All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to put this in the meeting. And we will get started with soil and water at first. Hang on just a second. Mindy, do you want to explain?
Sure.
After Mindy calls.
Awesome.
Real quick. Sorry.
The new forms in front of you, they're in order by presentation tonight. And I just added a couple of things. Made it a little bigger so it wasn't such an eye chart because I just started it yesterday as well.
Also, in the top right corner of each page, you will see the comparison between 25 and 26, as well as any adjustments that were made from 25 when we talked to you yesterday about the 25 adopted budget versus the 25 total budget. So if there were any adjustments made there as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, everybody. My name is Leah Dick. I'm the Conservation Director for the Montgomery County Soil and Water Conservation District. And I'm told I'm supposed to talk a little bit about what soil and water is, just for a recap. So a Soil and Water Conservation District is a subdivision of state government, and we work to conserve the natural resources of the county. So we do this by providing technical, financial, and educational resources. So some of the things we do are site visits for anyone that lives in the county, and that can be their gardens, their links, these invasive plants and species. So we're a resource for the entire county. So my budget, I've done for 2026. I think I'll start with the reductions we have done. So I reduced our overtime line item to zero because Sam, who is our program coordinator, he's non-execent, and he chooses to take contracts and not overtime. So I reduced that to zero because we don't need it. And social security, I reduced down to zero. I actually deleted that line entirely because we no longer pay. The other physician, same position I just mentioned, used to be grant-funded, so we would pay social security out of our district fund, but we no longer do that since it's county-funded. So that's been reduced. I deleted our cleaning line item because we don't need cleaning supplies typically. We haven't used that or most of that line item in the past, and I just got rid of that. And then our off-storage line I also reduced or totally deleted because we haven't used that higher. And then as for additions, the program coordinator and the conservation director positions, I gave those a 3% raise that we were advised to do, so that's that. And then everything else is the same except for two lines I added for repairs, $1,000, which we will use in the case we buy a vehicle in 2026. So that's something that my board has kind of discussed. Currently, we use the MRCS vehicles, the USDA MRCS vehicles, but just in case if we needed to buy a new truck for just the district, I put in $1,000 for repairs. And then the other line is for rent. So currently, soil and water is housed in the USDA Service Center with MRCS, and MRCS covers our portion of the rent. But with, you know, new administration and some restructuring in MRCS, there's been talks that soil and water may need to cover their half of the rent. That's kind of up in the air, so I just added that preemptively. And then if we end up not needing it, I would do a reduction. Those are my changes. Any questions?
Any questions?
Who was talking to you about the rent out here? Who was saying?
It's Brad.
Oh, right. Which of the ASCS goes to talk to you about maybe that came into your...
Yeah, that's the kind of some rumors floating around. So in Cass County, so there's a soil and water district in Montgomery County, and Cass County had to start covering their portion of the rent. I'm not sure of the exact details, but we were advised from the Indiana Association of Soil and Water Conservation District to just have a backup plan just in case we're asked to cover the side of the rent.
Well, if they could start talking about maybe it wants to be that, well, you know, I do work with parks, so I know needles to do, so it'd be nice if they would work with soil and water.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
I appreciate you being there.
Tom, is there a place to put the...
We actually walked our building and looked at a few spaces. We have a few vacant offices that might be available, so we talked about that.
Yeah, and that would be another option as well. So if those offices were still available, we would probably go down that route, but I just wanted to add this in there, you know, worst-case scenario, so.
Thank you.
Bye. Thanks.
Purdue Extension.
Good afternoon. I'm Monica Nego with the Purdue Extension office. And Joyce gave me a little heads up on that I'm supposed to share something about myself, so I prepared. So I just first, we are kind of a little odd being Purdue Extension. Most people are like, I don't understand why you are a county department, so I thought I would explain that a little bit. So the Quap River Extension Service is created through the Smith-Leaver Act of 1914, and we are here to deliver research-based information from the university that came from the land right universities and the moral act that happened way back in 1862 and 1890. So that's why we're here. We provide agriculture help and youth development in our community, and we are funded from a three-crown approach from the federal, state, and local levels is how we get our funding. So I thought I'd explain that a little bit more to you guys. But overall, we provided over 400 hours of education to 6,000 contacts this year, and we also manage 3 volunteer groups. We have our 4-H volunteers, master gardeners, and extension homemakers, and they provided an additional 2,000 hours' worth of service and education to our community. And our master gardeners actually donated 500 pounds of produce to students and the fish food pantry through their Nivelston garden that they manage through a program that they have there. But then I also want to point out that Tricia provides, I'll just point out one thing so you guys don't listen to me talk too much, but she provided pesticide applicator recertification card, which is something all farmers have to take every year, 215 different farmers. They average 44,000 acres of hard land that she was able to help make sure is being done properly. One thing I thought I'd point out for myself is I do a lot of nutrition education, but one of the services I provide is I help the jail do their menu creation and approval. And this is a process that is required by the state that they have to have their menus approved every year to make sure that they're meeting the proper nutritional guidelines. And I provide that service just as being here as Purdue Extension where that's something that they would probably have to pay or else if I did provide that. And I do for Montgomery County along with other counties as well. And then our 4-H program served 560 youth this year. We had 91 first-time participants, so that was an exciting number to have start for us this year. Okay, so that's what we do. As far as the budget goes, I just did the increase of 3% for our office manager as was told to do. We have a 3% increase in our contractual service, which is the contractual service we have with Purdue in order to have a Purdue Extension office here in the community. I do have an increase in my travel expense, but you'll notice I also decreased the cleaning expenses to try to make up that difference, but we're spending more money than we have in mileage, so we need to decrease that a little bit. And then I also was able to decrease our computer software only slightly because things got a little cheaper there, ironically. But otherwise, everything is the same.
Any questions? All right, thank you. I guess just sort of, I know that we're not voting on anything tonight. We're just taking all this under advisement and we'll review what we have to hold on. Coroner.
Good evening. I'm Steve Gressmeyer, the county coroner. You know, our office is charged with determining the cause of manner of deaths within the county, and then working with agencies to ensure that the disease can serve, turn it over to the final arrangements and circumstances. Coming to you tonight reviewing our budget for next year, salaries were increased 3% as we were instructed. I did ask to increase staffing to have one additional deputy as our caseload has increased quite a bit. Last year, we had 84 calls for service for the entire year. This year, we're already at 70, and our autopsy number has also increased, which we all know can vary from year to year depending on what's going on. One thing that we've noticed in the last 18 months to two years is the number of our deaths have not only increased, but the age has decreased of our decedents, which we all know when somebody young unexpectedly passes away, that automatically triggers more in-depth investigation. One thing that we have noticed is our drug abuse deaths seem to have decreased, and that's a direct result of the support you guys have given our office and the law enforcement partners and EMS and everyone in the community to help reduce that. But with that, I have asked for an additional person to be run on staff to help with that caseload because with all of us working other full-time jobs, we try to make sure that we have someone in the county at all times to cover calls and release remains, transport to autopsies as needed, things like that. Everything else, I pretty much left the same except our office supplies. I did ask for an additional amount of funding to pay for a new printer. Our printer is kind of on its last leg, and I want to be able to replace that over the first of the year. And then increasing our autopsy budget from $30,000 to $40,000. The vendor that we did use, the company we used for our autopsies up until a few months ago, changed their business model and they're no longer traveling to us. So to continue using that company, we would have to travel to Marion County and then pay the Marion County coroner's office fees, so we'd be covered in fuel along with the service or the facility fees from Marion County. We went to a new company who's slightly more expensive, in my opinion. They do a much more thorough job. They're much faster in their responses and providing final autopsy reports, and they continue to travel to us, which saves us from having to wear it there and burn fuel going to Indy all the time. And then our local facility that we use has a much more palatable cost for their facility fees. But like I said, other than that, the remainder of our budget, I pretty much left along except for those few things.
So you feel that that's enough to cover it for that $10,000? Do you feel that you'd be comfortable with that?
If it was a perfect world, I would ask for $100,000 and know that I would never have to come back to the N.A. I feel like another $10,000 would be a reasonable expectation to get us through next year, to increase by $10,000.
So don't even worry this year.
Right, right. And some of that has been, we had a couple of cases that I had to pay for autopsy twice because I got my results back from the previous autopsy company. And they came back undetermined when we reviewed things, and we just weren't comfortable with that. We went and paid for this company to review the same data, and they came back with a list of things. So that right there, I paid for one autopsy twice. And those are things that I feel like with this new company, we won't be running into.
Any questions? Outside of experience, the autopsy fund is a crapshoot every year. Sometimes you get back five day money, and sometimes you're back asking for more money.
Absolutely right.
Is what you presented, so thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Next up is Treasurer.
Good evening. Heather Lefouin from the Treasurer's Office. We collect property taxes, handkeeper tax, excise, things like that from state, dog tax as well. And our office has two extremely busy times of the year, and the rest of the year, we're doing more collection than what you were advised. So we receive that all the money for the time, so whether it's on a monthly basis or a date basis. So for my budget, we did the 3% increase. I'm not really sure why the part-time is showing up as a 13% increase. So I have two seasonal helpers that come in and help. I'm just not sure where that 13%, I really don't. I just saw that just 13% tonight. I'm just needing the 3% increase for the part-time help on their hourly rate. And then there have been some reductions. If you go down to dues and subscriptions, that amount has gone up $150. Our Indiana County Treasurers Association has notified me that instead of my dues getting 0.5% of my salary, it's going to be 0.75% of my salary. So that was $423 just for myself, but then I have to also pay dues for my two deputies. Okay, so that increase is because of the dues that I'm required to pay to be part of Indiana County Treasurers Association. And then seminars and trainings, I reduced in county general by $150, but I've increased it in dog tax. So two times a year, in order to keep my staff close on tax day, I provide lunch. In the past, my husband and I go out, and this is just asking for like an earned salad and pizza for myself. Instead of coming to you guys and asking for an additional preparation out of dog tax, I'm asking for it at budget time. So that's what the $150, it's 10 meals total.
Was that January or December?
We're pretty...
Why you wondered where you went?
No extra dressing, no somethin'. You drink water and bring your own drink.
Sorry.
So.
Should I quote my name before I do?
Yes, we do. I'm forgetting.
You're welcome to come in and volunteer in our office during tax day, and I probably need to give you lunch as well. I have to have that out of my pocket.
Any questions for Brad? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Nancy Cox, County Recorder. And the Recorder's Office is tasked with the perpetuation of our records. So in Montgomery County, we are, not by me, but by all the people before me, blessed to be way ahead of most counties in Indiana. Our records are digitized from 1823 on. We still have to keep the books, that's our main thing. We try not to take care of a book unless it's truly deteriorating and costs $5,000 to like renovate one of them. But right now, our books are in good shape. We are going back and adding details to each record, so they're more searchable, but they are out there and searchable for anyone who looks. And I have a record of collections to pass out just for information. The Recorder's Office, right now, Montgomery County is funded almost 100% on the fees that we charge and the fees we charge our state statute. We do not set the price, the state does, and every county's like just the same amount. We are one of few counties that fully fund ourselves. Boone County, the Recorder and the chief deputy are funded out of the general fund. Fountain County, the Recorder and the chief deputy are funded out of the general fund. Right now, because we are so far ahead in our scanning, scanning which costs a lot of money, we are able to do that ourselves. So until we get behind, we can continue to fund ourselves. Right now, we overspend what we collect slightly, but we have a pretty good hefty budget balance still, so right now, we're okay. I'm going to give you a copy of this just to show you, not only we fund ourselves, but we, the fees that we collect, again, not set by me, but set by the state, some of it goes into elected officials training, some goes into the general fund, some goes into surveyor perpetuation. So we are dishing into all of those funds and funding ourselves. So I'm going to give you that. Thank you. I think there's two there. I'll let you guys hear it. Okay. So as far as our budget this year, we increased a 3% out of the perpetuation fund for payroll, and then I did decrease, I was able, I think I'm pretty good to decrease our spending out of our office supplies. Our big contractor, our big vendor that we use is remaining very nearly the same. So I think we're good with that. No other comments really on the budget.
Thank you. And then...
Mindy Byers, County Auditor, reporting for Sherri Bentley, the county assessor. She is at conference right now, so she has sent me a little note. I'll just read to you. She has three funds, county general, reassessment, and the sales disclosure fund. County general and reassessment salaries are up 3%. She can fund, she funds all of her deputies out of her reassessment fund. So again, it's like the recorder, it's kind of pays for itself, but she's unable to pay for her salary out of the reassessment fund. So she pays for it out of county general. That's the only thing that she has in county general. She puts her G.I.S. expense, which is the aerial photography through Eagleview, she puts that in her sales disclosure fund. And then she gave all of her deputies the 3%. She has one deputy, it looks like, to be filled. She's kept everything else pretty much the same. There was an increase. She said the RS consultant for appeals includes Tyler, her vendor, contractual due plus attorney or appraisal fees due to appeals. The RS software conversion, she's, where's that at? Oh, line 4441. That is increased. She said she's not sure why she increased that, so she's going to bring that back down, or we can bring that back down. The G.I.S. is up 7,000, but she is asking for additional services. And I think she spoke to you guys about that. She was looking at some oblique photography that was going to help like the sheriff and people like that look at the buildings in a different way. So that's the reason that went up. I might be able to answer questions.
Anybody having questions? Hi. They've had to step away. I'm sure it'll be fast. Okay. Moving on. Thank you for that, Mindy. Surveyor.
Tom, I'm the county surveyor. The county surveyor's office is responsible over senior maintenance, construction, and reconstruction, all the kind of regular areas, as well as section four perpetuation throughout the county. Currently, we have one full-time employee besides myself, but we do have a line item for a part-time position that's currently vacant. We can fill that soon. So you can see on the surveyor's budget, the increase of 3% toward the salary lines. The part-time line is, it represents a 3% increase to the per-hour rate for us to that part-time position, as well as an increase in the amount of hours per week that I expect out of that position in 2026. Salary benefits with $110. Office supplies are an additional $100, which is based on the additional staff. Travel expenses, $50 from $100 last year to this year. The other big one is the printer maintenance, $600 for 2025, that's $1,500 for 2026, and that's because of the purchase of a lease on a new copy of the sheet. So that represents the monthly payment for that lease. And then dues and subscriptions up $100. That represents all the changes in the surveyor's budget. Long in the drainage work. So there's a drainage work budget, there is no change, all the numbers are still the same, 2025. So is there any question?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Speaker one.
Mindy Byers, County Auditor.
Judge Byers.
Judge, wouldn't that be nice? God, give me a robe, please. I'm just kidding, I would not take that job. Heather couldn't, Judge Barahas couldn't be here tonight, so we're looking at Superior One's budget. I think you guys all know what Judge Barahas does. If somebody would like to, that has more knowledge about that. I know she does adoptions, and that's really cool, so that's my favorite part of her job. She gave her people, her staff, 3% and pretty much left everything else the same. Looks like we have a decrease in interpreter fees and a couple decreases, drug court treatment, and dues and subscriptions. I do not have anything to read from her, but it looks like she's maintained a pretty static budget for this year. It's actually down about a half a percent, so overall.
Okay, well, since she's not here to ask questions too, we'll thank you for the information. Superior two. Judge Petrie.
Good afternoon. Judge... Glad that they finally let you out. You did. How many days have you been in the elevator? Yes, solid here. I did have to fully charge going and give me five hours with ATG service in the elevator. I will notice on a Sunday evening as a dedicated civil servant, I was in on the weekend and then had to get props of firefighters to let me in my elevator. Now you gave your slips. We are, we're looking for, it's not included in this, but a decrease in health insurance for all the core gas employees who are reducing their cardio. We already used that joke yesterday. Doubling down. So I am the judge of Montgomery County's Superior Board Two. I preside over misdemeanors, small claims, traffic court, probate, determination of criminal rights, general civil jurisdiction, so personal under cases or tort cases, split divorces with the other two courts, and I preside over the battery court and family recovery court. And then to add on, for Speaker One who didn't get to that, divorces, adoptions, every level six felony in the county, as well as the Montgomery County Drug Court. On my budget, I'm asking for a 3% increase for the staff, and then believe, everything else stays the same. Well, that's not missing something on my own budget, but I'm sure it's a beautiful slot.
Any questions for Judge Petrie? All right. And last one, please, Judge Chad.
Good evening. I'm Derek Chad of Circuit Court. For those of you who don't know, I guess, Judge Petrie just described, we share civil type of cases, can be divided into three courts. Outside of that, in Circuit Court, we handle all of the juvenile cases, that would include both juvenile chins or children in need of services, and our juvenile delinquency cases. Circuit Court also handles our more serious criminal cases, the serious felony crimes. With that, in terms of budget, I think I've only requested a couple of changes from last year. I've included the 3% raise for staff, and then I've included a little bit extra money, for additional money to get some furniture for our jury room. I think we talked about that in the past, we fell off on that, given renovation project, and see what we're left with, what kind of room we're going to have. So now I'm in the market for a large table to hopefully be able to accommodate a jury and some chairs. I haven't answered any questions. I think those are the only real changes from before.
Any questions? I think it's ready to judge. All right. You're welcome. Next up, Clerk.
Good afternoon. Summer Six, very open and open.
Well, that's not missing something on my own budget, but I'm sure it's a beautiful slot. I know.
Any questions for Judge Petrie? All right.
Surveyor.
And last one, please, Judge Chad.
Good evening. I'm Derek Chad of Circuit Court. For those of you who don't know, I guess, what Petrie just described, we share civil type of cases, can be divided into three courts. Outside of that, in Circuit Court, we handle all of the juvenile cases. That would include both juvenile chins or children in need of services and our juvenile delinquency cases. Circuit Court also handles our more serious criminal cases, the serious felony crimes. With that, in terms of budget, I think I've only requested a couple of changes from last year. I've included the 3% raise for staff, and then I've included a little bit extra money, for additional money, to get some furniture for our jury room. I think we talked about that in the past, we fell off on that, given renovation project, and see what we're left with, what kind of room we're going to have. So now I'm in the market for a large table to hopefully be able to accommodate a jury and some chairs. I haven't answered any questions. I think those are the only real changes from before.
Any questions? I think it's for your judges. All right. Next up, Clerk.
Good afternoon. Summer six, very open, we're in a work. And we do a lot in our office, and I'm still learning some of the things we do. We do all the court files, keep track of that. And we do all the money sent from judgments and money back out from those. We do marriage license, we do passports. Actually, we're one of the only county clerk's offices that does passports still. We have people from multiple counties coming into Montgomery County, which does bring some money into the county. So we do all the election stuff, we're doing campaign finance stuff at this point. I'm here for next year. So we stay very busy. So Mindy, I had a note to you, did you get things squared away from me?
No, I did not.
Okay, that's all right. Just wanted to go through the payroll, part of our budget. We did an S for 3% increase on that. I believe I had one line item that I left out here. I'm not seeing it at all on that one. The part time court deputy that we had somehow got left off. That's my error. And I think part of that, it was a full time position at one point, and then we split it into two part time positions, and so there's a little muddling there. But basically on that, we're looking at 33,000 to fill that part time split between two people. Would like to continue to do that approach. We'll be losing one of my part time people here at the school starting. So I'm not sure I'll go to fill both those positions, but that would still be the intent. So we'd add, add the 33,000 on there. Office supplies, asking for a little bit extra on the office supplies. We've had some out pocket expenses with the move. I have a safe that I'm going to have to replace. I think it was a bolt to begin with. And so that's going to be a little bigger amount than I was hoping to spend. On the dues and the seminars, I would like to put those back down, what we had before. I thought we might need more of that. We had 1,500 last year, you guys gave me an increase. I don't think we needed that much, so we'll drop that down to 1,000 on the seminars and training. For the election, most of everything we left the same as 2024, will be in a midterm election, so we should be able to drop some of those, but I doubt we'll use all those funds. However, I think, Mindy, if I was on the, and I apologize, I'm kind of new at reading the budget software, and I believe the absentee voter amount was left off. So we have the precinct board members, but the absentee voter board, which is all the early voting that is done, falls under the absentee, and that was 25,000 in the last go around, and that's probably going to be somewhere close to that. The precinct board is election day voting, and that stays the same. I've seen it up, taking some of the election supplies that we've had to purchase. And so some of those numbers that are going up there are reflecting what I've seen from what I've been given. Janitor and rents, we are losing our space at the courthouse. We've already done early voting in the past, so we're hoping we can move to the government center, but in the event we would have to run something in early voting, I want to be prepared to do that. Other than that, I believe that should stay, questions, anyone, any questions on the election budget?
Question on the part time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that was funded last year, too, so it's not all in money?
Right, yes, it was funded. Funded last year. The interesting thing was somehow it went from 2024, it was a full time position, because I moved someone in, we didn't have anybody in, and I moved somebody in that wasn't part time. That got dropped down to a part time position, I think, when we had the turnover in 2025. That was a full time position. And I think that probably should be, would be in the best interest of the office, so we live full time. At this point, I'm not sure that I would hire someone full time. I probably split it between two part times still. That's what we did all summer.
So it's not an increase?
It's not an increase. No.
Right.
No. Well, there'll be a 3% increase, I guess.
Any other questions?
I guess I need to deal with my perpetuation fund, and I was asking for 30,000 in that to be set aside. That would fund my part time perpetuation scanner that we'll still be using. We made a huge dent in those endeavors this summer. And then also some of the software that we'll be needing to use for our digital transformation for that.
Okay. Here you go. Prosecutor Lewis.
And you have the two additional deputy prosecutors responsible. I added it here. We didn't request that for the salary page.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Orr. I'm the deputy prosecutor with prosecutor's office. Brief description, our office, and I handed you guys out some numbers reflecting our case total filings from 2017 all the way through projected 2025. We've also included some statistics for our search warrants. Our office enforces prosecutors' cases where individuals within the community or when they violate law within the community, prosecute them. We also participate with search warrants, help out law enforcement if they need to enter into a building, vehicle, access records from the online database. We're helping them address those, and that's really exploded over the past couple of years. That is not limited to just accessing houses and vehicles and you're looking for controlled substances or physical evidence. We're looking for evidence of child pornography, Facebook's records, Snapchat records, all the way to financial frauds. We're trying to identify cryptocurrency schemes, things like that, people that are defrauding our local businesses. Additionally, we process and handle red flag seizures, so if someone is having a mental health crisis that they're in danger of themselves or the community, we can seize their firearms, assist law enforcement with that paperwork as well. So our office handles a little bit more than just enforcement of the criminal code. And as you can see, our numbers have just pretty much grown fairly steadily since 2022, and this year's looking to be a pretty busy year for us. Our budget, we've asked for the 3% salary increases. I will highlight for you guys additionally, our copier lease has increased what we're requesting there. That's a set term of the vendor that we use. Their rates are what they are. We don't have much ability to negotiate with them. Additionally, we've asked for a $2,000 increase with our law books. It's just an increase that we've had. I will also note, there are four spots, the dues and subscriptions, seminars and trainings, furnitures and fixtures and office equipment. We've requested slight increases in all of those. I will note that our office has not requested an increase in those four categories since 2022. We've been trying to hold steady with those, but with us expanding, getting more space in the courthouse, and then hopefully getting some interns next year, we're going to need some more equipment, spaces, have to pay for continuing education, attorney registrations and the like. As I mentioned, unfortunately, there's a hiccup. We had requested two additional deputy prosecutor spots. When I was here earlier in the summer, and you guys graciously allowed us to fund a intern, which was a great success over the summer, but our office is looking to have about 60% turnover within a six to eight month period, starting at the end of '26. So out of the five criminal prosecutors that we have, three of those will be retiring. We're going to be alert. You guys can see from the numbers that we're looking at, if we drop down to two deputy prosecutors or three deputy prosecutors or total prosecutors, we are not going to be able to keep up with the workload that our excellent law enforcement provides to us. And so we're going to have to start cutting back on some of the things that we do. So we are asking for those two additional deputy prosecutor's positions to be funded with the anticipation of getting interns in the summer, and then having licensed attorneys come in in October after they're sworn in, and try to have a stopgap there. That way we don't have a total loss of institutional knowledge and performance within our office.
Well, the two extra positions you're asking for, plus everything that's back to normal, you're going to go back to the normal 90?
Yes, so 2027, we're not going to be requesting those two additional spots continued. This is a very short term, we're finding ourselves in a pretty unique situation. Thankfully, we've had a lot of consistency in the office, which has allowed for the development of that institutional knowledge and the efficiency that we've had. We're going to try to have as smooth a transition as possible.
And then the other thing that's interesting here, on all this, is this pressure from outside hand with our numbers going up, or is it pressure within the county? Illegal, so what, I mean, what are we seeing on this paperwork here that's causing all that extra pressure?
So, I mean, it kind of ebbs and flows. As you guys can see, '27 to '21, for misdemeanors, that's the largest volume of offenses that we're looking at. That stays fairly consistent, bouncing between the upper 700s to the upper 900 cases per year, or over 800, I apologize. And then in 2022, we have a pretty strong jump, and that stayed consistent, the 12 to 1100 this year, or projected at 1,300 misdemeanor filings. So in my opinion, we're seeing a lot of marijuana paraphernalia coming across the Illinois border. Additionally, this year, it seems that there's been an uptick in O W Ys. And those aren't, those aren't limited to alcohol related, an operator while intoxicated. Someone is ingesting marijuana over in Illinois, and they come over here, they're intoxicated, they're putting the community risk, and we're filing those cases and pursuing those, and ensuring that we're maintaining some sort of public safety here for our citizens and motorists.
So are the two additional positions included here?
They are not. There was a hiccup, and I apologize for that, those getting added on. So those would be added in at the base rate, I believe it's 78,000 and change there. And again, those, we're not looking to hire into those until October of next year. We just want to have that allocated for, so we're not.
That's correct.
Yeah, because we want to make sure that we're having some sort of transfer of that institutional knowledge, and we can activate people, new attorneys to the community. Again, I'm fairly confident that our intern for this summer is going to locate here. He'll be a nice addition, he still needs another one.
So they're going to come in at what rate, did you see the last one?
Yes, it would be that base rate, lowest paid deputy prosecutor, deputy holder defender, I believe it's 78,000 and change is that base rate today.
78,972 is what's.
So appropriate from that point, it would be that 78,000 minus what they had in work for the year.
Correct.
But you want two of them?
Yes, yeah, because we're going to be losing two at the end of '26, and then one in the middle of '27. So ideally, we can pull back together as best we can.
So your critical budget about 78,000. I don't want to down.
For two, I forget about two cents.
78,000.
But in the interest of selling ourselves, I will say that the quicker our office is able to process cases, get things filed, the faster we're getting people out of custody, either through resolution of their case, assigning appropriate charges, because sometimes what people are arrested for is necessarily what our office files on, so we can get people moving through the system, get them out of custody, or go into the Department of Corrections, that's ultimately where they're going, and faster, faster time to cost the sheriff a little less money housing those people that don't necessarily need to be there. Happy for any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you also for checking.
Hi, I'm Angela Stacey. I'm the administrator of the Montgomery County Four Dean Prosecutor's Office, under Mr. Huser. And we establish support, paternity, medical orders for non paying, against non paying non custodial parents. And we do various things like hit their taxes, hit their bank accounts for really delinquent cases, and enforce the support and the readers. So we bring them in to see the deputy prosecutor if they're not paying, and then make them explain why they're not, try to get them on a road to paying. It's free to any parent in Montgomery County that has children in their care, and we're able to, wonder if it hits all the criteria, get them support, work on giving it to them, and just make their life a little easier as a parent. In the past, we've brought in like $3 million a year, your collective total child support. And a lot of that stays in the community, that of course, some of the mothers have moved off to San Antonio or someplace, so there's a little bit of it that does go outside the community. We are covered by the state, by the first, 29,000 is paid 100% reimbursement from the state, and every dollar after that is paid back at 66 cents. So if you see my budget, we have the 3%, okay, on the salary, but then on social security and, what was the other line, Mindy, social security?
Impulse Medicare.
Yes, and the Medicare. We have to put numbers in there, but it's not really going to be taken out of our budget at the end of the year. It's there to get that money reimbursed to the commissioners fund for any money paid for the health insurance, all the taxes. They're returned at 66%. So, correct. And I don't think I had any increases outside of that. We do supplement a little bit for our copier and other funds we have to the amounts that we're able to. And if any of our supplies go over, we usually hit the incentive funds, the money that we get from the state for our performance, which we're always green, I think it's 13 years. We always score in the green, is what they say, so we're high performers for, you know, medium sized county. So that's all I have.
Judge.
Do you want to address the pretrial diversion fund? We didn't talk about that. Yeah. The, yeah, the 4911 there, pretrial diversion.
So pretrial diversion, just for the community?
Watching a large, that is a discretionary fund that's run through the prosecutor's office. There's deferred, diversion and deferral monies we collect from participants in that program, traffic deferrals and the criminal pretrial diversions. That money is then accrued into the weekend fund, some of the expenses that our office occurs through those funds, saving the general balance from us asking for that money.
We've also purchased law enforcement equipment. I think most recently, we purchased two drones, one for the city and one for the county.
Does that, is that a special implement, on there? That's a kind of a big increase?
I think that's what we put that money into, when we're going to expand it for a specific purpose.
Okay. Make sure we're not losing dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Brian.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian, I'm the chief public defender, and our office, the public defender office, represents folks who are charged with crimes and cannot afford legal representation. We don't make appointments, the courts make those appointments. They send us the assignments, and then we represent criminal defendants who cannot pay for their own attorney. We also represent parents in chins cases, child needed services cases. When the Department of Child Services gets involved and they need to remove children from parents, or just believe they may leave them in the home, but they believe that there are services that the parents need. Unfortunately, most of these parents that are involved in those cases don't have sufficient funds to pay for their own attorney either. So we get appointed to most parents, and unfortunately, these cases typically have at least one mother and sometimes two or three dads, so we end up with, you know, sometimes three or four different attorneys. And then I have to go outside of our office to find conflict attorneys to represent the initial parents when those situations arise, which is not unusual in chins cases. As far as the budget goes, you're all probably tired of seeing me the last few months here. Brett's already made a point to tell me that. So if you'll notice, it looks like we're asking for a big increase in our budget, which in a way we are, but it's technically what's already been approved by the board, the council here. The three big items we had to move, if you recall, one of our, we were funding one of the deputy public defenders out of the supplemental fund. State told us we couldn't do that, so we've had to move that into the county general. Proposed to do that for next year, 2026. And then the increase of the, once we, with your gracious approval to get into the commission, we had to increase the chief salary and the chief deputy salary being. we had to increase the chief salary and the chief deputy salary to be in compliance with their rules, so we can get the reimbursement, which when in the end, if we come back a year from now, that budget will look a lot different than when you consider the reimbursement when we went back to the state.
Brian, you want to explain a little bit? People might not know that we're going to be saving a lot of that money.
Right.
What I did with this.
Right. That's, that was the whole purpose. There is a state program that now seventy out of ninety-two counties are in, that the state reimburses us up to forty percent for expenses incurred in representing persons charged with felonies. Not misdemeanors, we'll get reimbursed for that. But in essence, out of our proposed almost nine hundred thousand dollar budget, we will anticipate getting back two hundred thousand roughly, in the calculations we've done and the state's done, if all things go as planned, next year. So that would obviously go back into the County General and we'll reduce our whole budget then to probably seven hundred thousand or something. So, that was the whole point of bringing it to the commission several months ago and getting the Council's approval to do that, too. So, otherwise, salaries for my staff and my two deputy public defenders, I put in the three percent raise. The only other items that were increased from last year, I added, I'm requesting additional ten thousand for the conflict attorney line item. That's, that's the fund that we pay out of a couple of contract attorneys, and also when I have to go outside of those folks, to hire individual attorneys to do individual cases. And we pay for appeals and transcripts to go along with appeals. And I'm hoping that'll be enough. We've no spent over that amount this year in that fund, but now that we're settled, and hopefully not that we'll be fully staffed for next year, that that number will, hopefully will be sufficient, but I can't promise. But one, it depends on the cases. One of the, one of the appeals that we're paying for this year, if you may recall, my office did a three-week jury trial at the end of, before the end of last year, last November. And that appeal is still going on, but at this point, we've had to pay or will have to pay at least fifteen thousand out of that fund just for that one case. So, when, typically, if there's any criminal trial, I go all the way to a jury and lose, those typically get appealed. Chin's cases that turn into termination cases where parental rights are removed from the parents if they do not get with the program, with the services, and if the court's fine, the children cannot be returned to those parents, those cases almost always get appealed also. And so, we just never know how many of those have been had, let me share. And then also, I believe there's, we plugged in the thirteen thousand for the, for the intern. It was more indicated, we had one that you approved obviously this year, that went very well. If I had a spot open, or if I have a spot open next year, when he's available, he would definitely be someone I could look at to hire. But we'd like to have another intern for, for next year, that he's not prosecuted.
So you're pulling the staff now?
Yes. Say that out loud. At least the positions we have now. Can we use more people? Sure, we always use more people, but I believe this will keep us, and we can, I believe, be in compliance with the state to get the reimbursement, to be able, and we have enough.
Mindy, I have a question on that one, on thirty-one one-five. His conflict, he raised it ten thousand, but it didn't show a percentage increase. Showed it?
It's, pardon me, it's looking at the to, the twenty-twenty-five total budget. So, he had already raised it from ninety thousand to, yeah, so it's, it's looking at that toe, column J, if you're, if you're, computer, you're welcome.
When we split, here we thought a month ago, we split one of the full-time positions into two part-times. We took the amount for the two part-times, which was sixty thousand, and put it in to the, the other fund, the Public Defender Contract Fund that pays for contract attorneys. But then that left like ten thousand, so we put that into the conflict. But I knew we were going to need it to, so it's not new money, it's the money that was already paid.
Any questions, Brian? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Probation office.
Good afternoon. Andrea Nyberg, Chief Probation Officer from Montgomery County. I oversee the Innocence Court Services now. So we've branched out to a point that we have pre-trial program, which helps service individuals who are pending cases in the criminal justice courts. And we are helping them in advance of them going into court, helping to offset and hopefully get them on the right track at an early stage. We also do adult juvenile probation. We do a drug court program, family recovery program, and a veteran street report program. And so instead of having individual budgets for all of those programs, they're all incorporated underneath this one big budget. So you get multiple different conversations because we are dependent on grants, as you know. So you settle the right grants to be able to support all of those programs. So, in the one thousand, I did have a comment to Mindy on this previously, the percentage is not reflected correctly in those columns. I'm not getting a fifty-five percent raise, although if you would graciously give that, I would accept it. So, all employees are three percent paid increase. The only difference is if they have a different bracket based on the minimum schedule being put into that. And that's that based on how many years of experience they have. Otherwise, they're raised at three percent. The County General only pays for those positions, and then the rest of the funding either comes from grants or from user fees. So jumping into the, within the user fees, it's pretty standard as far as what I've been doing over the years. We do have three vehicles that we utilize for field work, and we try to do rotations to keep those spread out, so that I'm never having a problem with all three vehicles at one time. So this would be on the rotation concept of next year that we would be looking at, replacing the G that we currently have. Grant-wise, we have been awarded, although we don't officially have the award letters, so I'm always hesitant until I have it in the right. But we've been told we have received what are considered are major grants, the ones that cover five salaries. So that is the good news. We did see some hits in regards to those. The percentage loss was relatively low for us. Across the state, difference, every county got hit, depending on which grant we're talking about as far as what lending source it was. So they took out jail treatment programs, they took out prosecutor diversion programs, and next year, we're anticipating more hits. So probation departments saw those hits, but I am going to anticipate in twenty twenty-seven that we'll see some additional hits. So we continue to be cautious in regards to what we do, hopeful and fearful at all times. So pleased with what the rewards are, the grant awards that we have received. And I'm waiting on one grant for twenty twenty-six. I don't anticipate hearing from it from probably November, December, and it pays half of the salary. So, this year I have five and a half salaries paid off grants. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's great. So, is this the state cutting back on you, or feds cutting back? Who is cutting back? The state and the feds cutting back on these grants?
Yes.
Do they explain why they're cutting back on these? Because I know the health department has the same thing. The health department is saying this, the exact same thing. So is this just putting more pressure on us?
This year, we saw from the standpoint of the government, it came back in and said, okay, you can't spend it on what it was awarded on because we no longer will allow you to permit to spend on barrier busters. And so, we keep getting these significant cuts within specific categories that the federal government will not recover. The state by default gets federal money by default, we don't get it at the lower level. So with the cuts that they did, when I was talking about earlier, the pre-trial programs and the jail treatment diversion programs, all of those type, pre-trial programs that cut across the state. So, Marion County is an example. They had a program, pretty significant money for them, and they got cut completely. And they had to give up the entire program because they don't have that kind of money to come up and cover that. Monroe County is another example that I personally knowledge of, and they were able to get some additional funding from the state for a one-year period to help offset that. Problem is, when that money was announced that they're going to get that money, that's that money I'm hoping for in December. So now I'm just saying us not getting that. So there's always a trickle effect. Every time you cut here, it trickles down. So, I guess.
So, pre-trial diversion, that's more limited by courts, right?
Yes.
So, it's going to be more limited by courts, right?
Say it again?
You mean more workload by courts, more caseload?
When, talking about probation standpoint on the pre-trial aspect, once we get the case that means it's already pending, it's going before the courts, what we're trying to do is to help that individual get things back on track so that we can hopefully avoid having to go to a citizen in that nature, help them get back on track within the community, get into treatment, whatever it is that they need to do. It's truly the savings to the county if we can prevent that from getting to the extent that we're going to be seeing.
Is this an additional vehicle?
No, this is simply replacing the existing.
Is the other one, it's anything?
It will be. We'll have trade-in value associated with it.
Is that included in this?
It is not, because until I do it, I won't know. That would, the price that I received is equivalent to the actual cost of the vehicle, but then it's going to be less our trade-in value, which will be, in my opinion, a good trade-in value.
Is it going to be worth it?
Is the vehicle worth it?
Trade-in value?
Yes.
Any questions for you?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a minute to recognize. Mr. Bickle back in the back, who's going to leave us at the end of the year after distinguished, October, even quicker. Not that you're counting, yeah. So, yeah, just thank you for all your years of service to the community. And next up is me, I guess. I'm David Hunt from the County Council. I think you guys know what we do, hopefully. I don't have to describe that. Tom didn't give me that part of the deal. Our budget, we basically kept the same thing as last year. The special appropriations line is our placeholder, that amount obviously will be drastically reduced to help us balance. That will include, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, the, our appropriation to the Early Learning Center comes out of special appropriations. Is that right?
Comes out of the, that comes out of the Commissioner's budget.
Commissioner's budget, okay, okay. I thought we had that in ours, but, okay. So that's kind of where that sits right now. And then longevity, is that just part of the, how we distribute amongst the salaries?
Yes, that's for all the full-time employees of the county that you guys pay for that.
Okay, that's what I thought. Any questions on that? Obviously, it looks like we got a lot of money over there in the special appropriations, but that's going to go away, so.
That is, that, yeah, that is always a buffer that we put in there for advertising purposes, because something always gets forgotten, so.
Yeah, as you can see, last year we dropped it down to the two sixty-seven, so, and we've not used much of that even, so. Okay, moving on.
Mindy Byers, Montgomery County Auditor. The next one is for no department, which also could be called multiple departments, both of them managed by our office, and the first section under County General. A few years back, we decided as a council, I guess, like the rest, for all utilities to be paid through our office, all the utility bills, light, water, everything, was going to all the different buildings and the departments within those buildings. And the back and forth of people getting those claims on time and then getting them submitted to us on time. We were incurring late fees and we cannot as a county pay late fees. So we made a decision to take all of those on, and so all of the, all of the utility claims for every building come to our office, and we take care of those now. So, that is why it's under something called no department, because it's really everybody, but we handle it out of our office. The other one is the County Elected Officials' Training, which is collected by the recorder, but we just kind of manage the budget for that. And there's a handful of elected officials that can use that fund for the state hall training. And it's very specific as to who can use it and what can be claimed against it. So, again, it was kind of being, it was a little out of control with a different department, so we just decided to put it under a zero department and manage it through our, our office. Any questions? Nope. All right, let's keep going. These are, well, you just sit down.
Sit down, girl.
Hey, I have. Yeah, yeah, you can hear me. I could go without a microphone, y'all could hear me. Yeah. I, I'm going to get a little nerdy for a minute and brag on our office. Our office has five and a half people, myself included, and we do a ton of work. And I talked to the team today a little bit about what all they do. And a quick overview is every single bill that gets paid comes through our office for this county. Every single receipt, every piece, every penny that comes into this county, we have to receipt into the appropriate fund. A lot of this is, requires back and forth between department heads across the county. We are, our deputies are in constant communication with all of the departments. I think we are unique in that situation to do the receipting and the claims. Our payroll, everyone gets paid through our office. We have over two hundred full-time people at the county, and our payroll deputy does not just the payroll, she checks everyone's vouchers against their time sheets. I mean, there's a lot that goes into just the daily payroll, let alone she is the main contact with all of our healthcare benefits. She handles all the Ben Admin questions, she does all the end-of-the-year processing, anything you can think of with, with payroll, which clearly has not come to me right now, pays all the federal taxes, she pays the impurs and the pensions. And then our property deputies do, we have every transfer, every sale of property that happens comes through our office, every deduction gets applied in our office. And one of the unique things about the property deputies is, I mean, they have to understand the law, this SB one with all the changes with the property deductions. We, we have to be able to not only understand it, know how to apply it, but we also need to explain it to people who don't understand it. And that is, can be very difficult. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of nerdy cognitive thinking in our office. But there's, I just kind of wanted to give you guys, I think you understand what Jen and I do. I mean, we do the certification of the net AVs, we settle with the state twice a year, we do the abstract of taxes, which means we calculate all those, we make sure the abatements and the TIFs are on. I think you have an idea of what we do, but sometimes I think our deputies are overlooked. And there's, all of this work with five and a half people, that's, that's a lot that goes through our office. And the reason I bring this up is, I'm not asking for more people today, but I really anticipate our office needing to grow in, in the near future, especially with the changes that are being made. It is very difficult to function when someone's out of the office. With internal controls alone being the financial hub of the county, we can't have an accounts receivable person doing the same thing as an accounts payable person. You just can't touch it twice on both ends. So, those are some things that I kind of, that's what I get kind of excited about, is what we actually do in our office. And we have an incredible team, but it might need to grow soon. So I just kind of want to put that on the radar. As far as our budgets go, we did, we did try to lower everything kind of across the board, with the exception of the three percent raises. We shifted as much as we could out of County General into, we have a couple ancillary funds that we use, and you can see that we've shifted some things there. I did, we did have a couple things with new legislation last year that we talked about, and I had put fifteen thousand into legal services last year because we are now allowed to have our own attorney, thankfully this year. Thankfully, this year, we have not had to use that, so I'm crossing my fingers that we don't have to use that next year either, so I dropped that down to 5,000, to, again, that sat in county general. And the other is the, it's under additional duty pay, and that is the new legislation that allows for 2,500 for the elected official for the additional things that have been added to this position. And we had talked about that last year, David, but I, I took that out of county general and put that into one of our ancillary funds, but everything else we dropped, we're going to run a pretty tight ship next year, but I think we can do it. Something, the only other thing I want to put a bug in your ear, that we have talked about before, that it would be a huge project, but something that I think would save the county money, we feel pretty strongly that we should have a purchasing agent that would, we have some offices that bring pens from home and some offices that buy pens by the gallon, stuff like that, that could just, little things that we think about in our office where we might be able to save some money, but that is all I have, I think.
Okay, any questions for Mindy?
Next year?
Next year.
Is your office going to grow?
No, I'm not asking for that for next year, I'm just, I'm just putting it on the radar. And I, we, we don't have anything, I'm, I'm thinking more along a five-year plan, three-year plan, maybe. It's just, it's getting to be a lot, especially, it, it really, the internal controls, those are, there's a wrench in what we can do when someone is out, so. Right now, we have a team where Jennifer has one AP person and one AR person, and I have one AP person and one AR person, so, and that kind of started with COVID, when we had to, we were in a central office and we couldn't stay home, so to try and keep it down, like I said, she took a team and I took a team, and that was how we split up, so we were never without, like, a lead in accounts payable and accounts receivable, and we kind of keep that, but that's, right now, we only have one person that can do accounts receivable, and, anyway, so it's, it's going to be, it's going to be necessary sometime down the road.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I was starting to speed this process.
Ryan Neidham, Sheriff from Montgomery County. My station, we're officers of the courts, which means we handle all the orders, we handle all the civil process, we provide security to the courts, as well as Ryan Neidham. In addition to that, I also respond to all number one calls, we enforce criminal law, traffic law, respond to accidents, handle any emergency, non-emergency calls, if you can handle requests for service for law enforcement, and several others, because there's no way else to call, so. That's in a nutshell what we do. The budget, just going through the same sort of yearbook. As far as the sheriff's budget, it's kind of chopped up a little bit, pay lines, you guys approved the matrix for us last year, so some of you will see there's a raise, some you see that there's not, it's based on that two-year matrix. Not, I mean, and just going off what you guys suggested at the beginning, doing a 3% across the board, if somebody was matched out on the matrix, I just gave them a 3%, I don't know how you guys want to handle that. There were a couple lines that we did increase, equipment and radio equipment, mainly our, our car radios are just, I mean, they're about 20 years old, and we're having issues, ongoing issues with social media, we're having ongoing issues with, with people without our phones following us around, putting out too much information on social media, that's just not necessary. I would like to change that, the problem is our radios are so old that I can't put that technology into our radios and make that work right now.
And Ryan, explain how much portable and how much one for a mobile, for a vehicle is, but it's expensive, do you say?
They are expensive, I just got close, three weeks ago, a mobile radio right now was $7,400, a portable radio is about $4,500, so, I mean.
And they're not the ones kids use, these are.
Yeah, they're, they're not the ones kids use, they're, they're the equipment, like I said, most of them are 20 years old, so, I mean, you know, they, they serve us well, they last, but again, like anything, it's technology. The new ones can do far much more than what the old ones can do, they work right now, but again, I mean, I just think it's an issue, we had an incident a couple weeks ago, or on the weekend, you know, we responded to a waiting for a domestic call, we picked two people up at the gas station that were dropped off there, that were victims, our deputy was transporting them back home, and notices suspects following in the car, I mean, following the deputy. So he calls the other guys working, they get him stopped, of course, he's not compliant, you know, you know, in the middle of the night, and we had the situation resolved, but, you know, I mean, he's in jail, and, you know, when, when they got him, I mean, he had his scanner app on his phone, he's listening to everything we're saying. I think personally it should be illegal, I mean, that technology, I just don't know of what benefit that has, but it's, it's putting our officers in harm's way, and for the ones that aren't doing that, staying at home and posting every single thing with you and every single name on social media, I just don't think that's right. I don't think it's fair to our citizens, I wouldn't want my family's information posted on those social media, I trust you wouldn't either. So that, that's why that request is there for, equipment and radio equipment. The other equipment, our thing is just continue to do our body cameras, I think it's insurance the county probably provides, but between our in-car cameras and our, and our body cameras, they're expensive, but they have mitigated so many things, and I think you could ask the prosecutor, me and Brian, I mean, it just makes things easier. All the way around, you know, there's no question, it's not my one versus theirs, here's the video, here it is, here's what happened, there's just a necessary evil in there. But I love, I mean, from an administrative standpoint, our complaints, we, we just don't have them. I can't tell you the last time we got a complaint that was even semi-battle. We get a complaint, and we find that they give us a false statement, we will pursue that, but we just don't have it. Our guys, I mean, my guys, we go out there appropriately, and they do the right thing, and it's all documented, they're, you know, 99% of the time, they're dealing with somebody. You guys have any questions on that sheriff's budget?
You looking at replacing all the radios?
No, what I would like to do, I mean, I would like to do that all at once, but, I mean, that's a very expensive cost. What I would like to do is just start replacing those with our cars, so if we get five new cars next year, we're going to get five new radios, that's going to be.
Going to be fast enough?
Not really, you know, to come and ask, you know, we've got 30, approximately 30 radios, you know, $7,000 fees, I mean, I don't really want to come and ask for $200,000 from the council in a year where you guys are trying to, you know, keep things flat.
And as you, and as you get the new ones, and you can get them staggered where you don't get hit all the time, meaning new, new, new ones get, right, they'll be staggered all.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, I would like to have the money today, you know, and get those orders, but.
I see that, what you're talking about, social media, people prefer, I gotta go along with you, that's officer shape, and you got everybody in the county that knows what's going on.
It is, I mean, it's officer shape, and it's just common decency, I mean, you know, I mean, the stuff that some people are posting on there about, you know, victims of crimes, it just, we have nothing to hide, I mean, everything we do is recorded and can be seen by anybody, I mean, whether it's a probable cause affidavit or a police report, it's not trying to be deceitful, it's just trying to be, do the right thing for the community, and I, there's, I don't know, there's other things to do other than just, I'm hosting everything here on the scanner, on the social media.
So you wanted to replace the car radios first, and then the portables, or?
Our portable is right now well-handled.
They're not encrypted right now, are they?
They are encrypted, so, like, when the city went encrypted, our portables work, we can, we hear them on our portable. The problem is, is if you're off-duty driving in your car through Crawfordsville and something happens, you don't hear the Crawfordsville City Police, because our radios are now, I mean, just, it will.
Officers can't talk to our number in departments?
Not on the city frequency, because they went encrypted a few months ago.
They have changed their frequency, say.
They have to change their frequency, so the technology is there, we can go to a different channel, but dispatch, dispatches something just to call the city police, we won't hear it on our mobile, it's just on our portable.
Do you take much time to figure out what the cost to change to?
I don't think we can upgrade it, can't get older.
Did you review what you need to redo, the whole thing?
I don't know, I think we're looking to $250,000 to replace it.
I'm just thinking out loud, I'm just thinking out loud, but if you take five years to replace all that, or you go commit it all and bond it, or use a five-year payment plan, it's about the same, and the, we can discuss that, but we need information if we.
And I don't know, I've never done, I've never been in that situation with Ray Callum, a regular provider.
It might even be a lease, put a lease together, a lease, and then you change it out yourself, I mean.
Yeah.
Technology is keeping, I mean, it's going faster and faster all the time.
I mean, at the end of the day, I've, I've got a year left, you know, but I would like to get that process started, because it, it does, it affects all the, all the men and women that we deal with.
We don't want to find out that the, the person who was endangered and/or was active on and injured were the ones without the radio. I mean, if you do, if we only do half of them. The other question, Tom, is can this be bonded? Can we do a bond on these radios?
I think, I think we looked at doing bonding for other radios from the dispatch center, so that's, that could be a possibility, or a lease, or.
If you could just put together some numbers for us, so we can just at least look at that as we're putting our budget together to.
Yeah, a lease, lease to own, just like what you do with a piece of equipment for the highway department, you could do a lease to own with these, I'm sure.
I've got somebody in the back of the room that would love to work on that project, so, starting tomorrow.
And, and, and while we're talking about this stuff, the, the roof, you, you've got the bids for the roof, and we've got that coming in, too, so we need to remember that. Is that going to be a this-year bill or a next-year bill?
That is going to be a next month, additional appropriation request, the amount requested, we had a jail bond corporation meeting Tuesday, Monday, there's $19,000 left in that, so I'm going to be able to reduce that request that I'm asking for by 19,000 and some change, but our goal right now is to get that started mid-September and be completed by the end of October.
All right, keep going.
Security stayed the same, the only difference there was pay lines, the jail, there were a couple increases on the jail. I don't have my sheet in front of me, so I'm trying to go off your book. It was with equipment, I think. All right, there it is. We're just having continual, I mean, you guys have done like a great job with me, and I appreciate that, but again, the jail, I mean, we just have continual things that need to be, like, replaced. One thing that we need to replace early next year is our generator, the, I forget what the terminology is, it, it's a transfer box, that transfer box is outdated, so if anything goes wrong with that transfer box, the generator will not be able to provide power to the jail, and that's about a $24,000 replace.
Like a generator?
Yes, yep, it's a caterpillar, but, you know, it runs the majority of the jail, and it's just one of the, I mean, there's, there's nothing we can do with that, I mean, you know, Kat told us that you need to replace it, as long as it works, it's great, but if something goes down with it, there's nothing we can do. I just assume get that replaced and not wait until it goes down. Other than that, I mean, it pretty much stayed the same across the board on the jail, it was just a 3% pay raise. And then the user fee funds, I don't know if you guys want me to go through, I mean, they are what they are, if you guys have any questions about any certain fee or fund, I'd be happy to try to answer that.
Any other questions for Sheriff Needham?
Thank you.
I think we're good, but yeah, if you give us those numbers on the radios, then we'll, we'll at least consider that when we're putting together the final budget.
And I apologize for Mindy again for not letting me get up here five minutes earlier.
Nice try, though.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the police pension?
All right.
You could ask him, we didn't talk about it.
What's that? The police pin? No, I was, was there?
The pensions, there's quite a bit of increase, no, which one you're referring, police pension, it's all the way.
Ask if there's any questions.
In the jail? It's not perfect, it's, it's separate than that, the way that is funded and estimated, I mean, it's, it's a formula, I can't even sit here and begin to explain, but it's, I mean, I don't want to put it in the wrong terms, but, I mean, that number's going up because of what you guys have done. I mean, this is the first time in the existence that we have multiple people that can retire from the sheriff's office, that's never happened. We've had one or two here and there, but Montgomery County, as, as some of you know, was a training ground for years, I mean, we would get people here, they would get three or four years on, and they would leave, because not only the work that you guys have done, but, you know, previous councils, this is a good place to work, they're decently paid, and they, they've got great equipment, so that number, unfortunately, I mean, it's just going to continue to rise, but that's simply because we've kept people here, I mean, we're, we're not losing people. That's based on, I mean, they do, again, it's a very complicated formula that I can't even begin to explain, but it's essentially based on the demographics of the department, who can retire, who's eligible to retire, and they just, I mean, that fund is to ensure that if the county dissolved today, that everybody vested within that system would be paid on their estimated lifespan. We can probably, we can probably start with the chief deputy's salary, we can probably And the other one that.
That fund is, they used to be two or three, if you had funds, put into the fund for retirement, now that it can't, that you're going to put into the funds for retirement, should they all come together, because you got several people up for retirement now.
Yes.
And all those people are going to be pulling all that funding.
Yes.
Right.
Drawdown out there.
Yes.
I would, I would venture to say, in the long run, that's cheaper to recruit and train officers. And then, yeah, and then let somebody else hire them.
By far. By far, by far, and then factor in potential lawsuits, you know, errors in judgment. I mean, when we can keep people and get a career out of them, it's beneficial to the, to the entire community. And again, I wanna stress, that's, that's never happened before. I mean, you know, I, I think when Mark and I came in, I think there were five people on the, on the pension plan that, that were drawing some sort of pension. That number's doubled, and it's gonna continue to grow because of what you guys have done.
Last call, any other questions for the sheriff? Alright, now you can go.
Thank you again.
Alright, well, that concludes our budget hearings. We'll take all this under advisement, start looking at some things. And our next regular meeting, September 9th, 9:00 a.m. right here. Anybody have any last thoughts, questions, comments? Not even Steve? Had to call you out.